So I'm going to begin the Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, May the 21st, 2019. And the first topic for tonight is status of Iowa City Police Department's substation in the South District. So who's going to do what?
Chief Matherly's here. He can tee up the issue, but I think all the information that staff has to present is outlined in the memo and we'll leave it open to your discussion.
Hi, Chief. How you doing?
Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor. Jody Matherly, Police Chief. Like Simon said, it's in your packet. It's been in the media. We certainly talked quite a bit about this. This is an item I've been looking at for the last two and a half years since my arrival here. And we're of the opinion that it's time to shut those doors and move on.
I love it. A concise statement. One of the things I meant to say right at the start is that we all know that our last, four of our last five meetings have gone on far too long. So I'll take responsibility for that because I'm supposed to be running the meetings. But we need to do everything we can to make sure that we're dealing with each topic concisely and not letting ourselves go on and on and on about various things. And during the formal meeting, I'm going to ask people to limit their comments to not more than three minutes instead of five. I think if you have 40 people speaking, you know, three times 40 is whatever, and five times 40 is a lot more.
Well, if it's any consolation, a lot of the legwork's been done up front and particularly by that neighborhood. And when I say the neighborhood, the entire south side, they've combined forces for their association now, so they're speaking with a more, you know, solid unified voice. And they made it clear that the police department's doing their job down there, but the brick-and-motor structure really doesn't stand for where we're headed and what we are aiming to reduce crime, but also work with the community. So, you know, the status of that thing sitting there, really not serving a great purpose for us. It's more utility than anything. It's just time to shift gears and close that. That's our take.
And I did catch for the memo, but is Parkview looking then to take over that space? Is that correct?
Well, it is their building now, so there are new landlords. And kudos to them and Southgate, been fantastic supporters of ours and of the cities. Yes, you know, they would utilize that space in another way. We've met with their, the person in charge, the manager down there, and he said, whatever you guys want, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. We'll continue with this. If you want to leave, we'll utilize the space. So they're very flexible on it and very supportive regardless of our actions.
Jim, did you want us to comment now?
I asked questions of Jody. Let's see if we need to probe anything with them, and if not, then we can have some discussion about it.
I guess I would ask just one follow-up question. I was able to attend our former community service officer, Henry Harper's, going-away dinner last evening. And of course, this topic came up. And we all know the fabulous work that Henry Harper did serving our community and in particular being in close proximity to our community's youth, so that youth felt that they had a place where they could go, where they could get to know various members of the police department. And so what is the plan going to be sort of moving forward to ensure that we have that constructive space that the department can operate out of so that we can have those continuing positive contacts with the youth? Will they have a greater presence at other locations? And secondly, I was very pleased that we had the great feedback in terms of the neighborhood association. They did a lot of the heavy lifting. Have there been any dissenting voices that you've heard requesting that it remain?
So your first question, you know, I've always said we need to go to where the people are. I call them captive audiences. When I usually, and I've done this many times, you open the doors, you have cookies and punch and invite the crowds, and nobody shows up to my party. So we need to go to where those gatherings are, where the children are gathering, where the events are, and where they're already there and having fun, and then we participate in that. So we need to be stronger at that. That's why we're trying to work very close with the schools, because that's where the kids are. And so it's a good in for us, and we've done well in that area. Matter of fact, if you look at the annual report, our school visits have gone up tenfold in the last couple of years. And then the other question is, no, I haven't had anybody, you know, a couple store owners, but it's kind of nice to have it down there. As you know, we had the officer-involved shooting, and some of the comments in the paper was, well, this is why we probably want more police presence. And really, the building doesn't stand for police presence. You know, we encourage our officers to be in all areas of this city. When you're leaving a report, writing a report, don't forget to go to those areas we may not normally patrol to sit and write your report on the computer in your car. So, no, not a lot of dissent there. More support to close it than there are dissenters. Much more.
I've been to some of the South District meetings and seen one of the, actually two officers there at two different times. And I'll tell you that the presence of them and their participation in the meeting was very much appreciated. And one of the officers talked about how they like to be on the ground, boots on the ground, and interacting with people. Actually passed by the park, and I should have took a picture, because officers were actually playing ball with, you know, some of the residents within that community. And so I think that's very valuable, and I appreciate you bringing this to council. I think I agree with you that the purpose has been met. You know, it was a time where it was needed and it did, you know, a positive thing within that community. So I am supportive of what has been submitted.
Thank you.
I think one reason there isn't too much, at least from my point of view, to say is that the memo is so thorough. It really gave the full history of this issue and also the participation of the South District. I think that is, I think, a very exciting development in the South District, that there's a strong neighborhood association. I really am very supportive of the idea of shared governance and how we can promote, you know, grassroots activism in the neighborhoods. I'd like to go to one of those South District neighborhood meetings.
I will tell you, Councilman, if every neighborhood had a association like that one, we'd be in a much better place. They're organized, they're strong, they think things out, they're fact-based, they're awesome.
I think Angie Jordan has taken a really impressive leadership role in making that happen.
I agree. Wonderful lady, but everybody that associated down there is really good.
Yeah, I really don't have much to say.
I just have a question for the chair.
Sure, Maz. Go ahead, Maz.
Yeah, I remember, you know, you were speaking, this is for the police chair. You were speaking before about even more substation on the west side, and now I'm seeing this being closed. Are you still planning to do another one over there, or what's the deal here?
You know, I think every neighborhood is different. Every scenario is different. A lot of this is budget-driven. It's, you know, can we get space? What purpose would it serve? So you'll never see me just say flat-out across the board, no to any ideas, but if a storefront, or a mini-station, or a precinct, or whatever the word you want to use, fits right with the right area for the right purpose, at the right cost, yeah, we would certainly look at everything. It really is community-driven, and it's for the needs of the police department. And what we see down in the south side right now, we just don't need that building anymore. But it doesn't mean to say that some similar situation wouldn't work somewhere else. And we've talked about maybe the community centers having a little office there where an officer could stop in with a computer. And I mean, there's always ideas along these lines to boost presence, to boost communication, and really collaboration with the particular neighborhood. So, yes, that could be a possibility. It'd be open for discussion at any time for any neighborhood.
Okay, you mean like it's open, but for now, you just, that neighborhood doesn't need this anymore. But it still is another neighborhood needed. The idea is still open, right?
Sure, yeah. We're always open for conversations to improve things.
Okay.
So I too support the recommendation that Jody has provided us with, but I'm reminded of conversations that Pauline and I had with a cluster of African-American mothers about a year and a half ago, or thereabouts, maybe two years ago. And also things we heard, Rockney and I heard while on the civil rights tour with Henry and the 50 or so other people who did that last June. And the gist of it is that we heard, I think, over and over again, that it's very important to find, to have a place where youth can learn useful skills, be supervised by people who look like them, and feel free to be themselves. And I think Angie Jordan actually refers to something like that in the email she sent to us, which appears as Item 6D in our formal meeting packet, where she says, "I'm hopeful that space can be utilized by other community-enriching entities that promote business development, community gathering space, fellowship, or anything that can be open and used or frequented by the public regularly." In other words, it seems to me that we don't need this police substation, but we do need a space in the South District and maybe elsewhere where people can be themselves and do the other things that I've already mentioned.
And Mayor, I think you've got great partners down there in Parkview Church and other services down there that would be more than willing participants in that area. You know, you always have to look at space and staffing and programming and things of that nature, but I don't think there's a business like that down there, particularly Parkview Church. And I don't want to speak for them, but their mission is community-oriented. And I think those types of spaces, and even with our involvement, can still occur just without the huge billboard, police sign, and then the police cars. You know, I fully intend to continue down that road using those types of spaces, and I think there's partners down there that are willing to do that with us and with the south side district to improve things with our youth down there.
Yeah. And on that point, I note that we recently received, I don't know, a press release about the Boys and Girls Club opening a facility in Iowa City. I don't remember the details about it at all, but that could be a big plus. And Susan, I remember, I don't know, six years ago or something like that, we were talking about the possibility of the Boys and Girls Club coming down here and maybe being a really productive asset in terms of the stuff that we're talking about now.
And we've met with those folks, and there is a presence down there now. They were at Southeast Junior High. So yes, they are in our city limits, and I think they would like to expand, you know, and they're nationally-known, well-organized group.
I'd just say I support the recommendation. Again, I think, like John said, I think the thoroughness of the memo and the participation of the South District people, residents, I think that makes it a no-brainer.
I have to admit, I was just a little leery of doing that and going on data, not to compare it, but like with our deer situation, you know, we went for many, many years, you know, just in 10, it was decreased, and now all of a sudden, we waited years and didn't do anything, and it's rampant again. Not that the crime would run rampant in that area, but, you know, there's always that sort of fear. And you mentioned the large billboard. I thought of that, too, that if we did continue to leave it open, perhaps lessen the appearances of police station. I mean, it is gigantic. It just reads "police station." So I think if we could, on the lines of what the mayor was saying, negotiating something with Parkview, that they would allow it to be more of a kind of a community center and not necessarily police presence, but someplace that the police officers would still feel comfortable stopping in and chatting with the neighbors and just see what's going on.
Yeah. I'm fairly certain if we needed space down there at any given time for those types of activities, that there would probably be something available. Again, I'm not trying to speak for them, but their mission's pretty clear.
I'd like to mention one other point about some of the data that's presented and make a suggestion, actually. At some point in your memo, you present trend data with regard to various kinds of crimes from 2008 through 2018. And when I look at it, I see a chart of what I want to see is a graph with a best-fit trend line about the actual trends in data, because I think it's misleading to say that there was, say, a 2, I'll give an example, a 2.3% drop in total crime between 2008 and 2018. The question is the trend. And the trend is a matter of the data point in-between and what statisticians call a best-fit line connecting those data points, because you've got all the variation from year to year.
I agree, Mayor. And we, I had this canned several different ways when I first authored it, and it morphed into this to try to be a little more digestible, but I agree with you. And just know that if spikes happen consistently, if the trends start to spike, you know, we're well-versed to have a good grasp on that and deal with those issues if and when they were to happen. But I don't anticipate that happening. Our collaboration and team-building down there is going to continue to be very strong. Our data's going to help us identify those that are committing violent crimes, and we're going to deal with that without having a negative impact on that neighborhood, and that's everything.
Very good. Any other questions or observations?
No.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're going to turn to finalizing the roadway design for the McCallister Boulevard extension to Sycamore Street.
I'm just going to do a quick introduction while you want to plug your slides, Jason. So just want to remind everyone that McCallister Boulevard is located in the Form-Based Code District that Opticos is studying for us. So they have had a chance, since we've engaged their services now earlier this spring, to take a look at roadway design through the south plan area, including the McCallister, and they've made some suggestions that Jason's going to walk you through to improve the roadway design and hopefully set it up to be an integral part of future neighborhoods there.
Thanks, Danielle. Hi, Jason.
Hello. So as Danielle mentioned, basically what we're going to kind of walk through is, you know, about a year ago, we had kind of talked about McCallister Boulevard, the design that we were looking at. Get some of your input on what you wanted to see as part of that design, and we had gone through and kind of forwarded that design. We knew all along that Opticos was, their input was going to be part of that process. And so we're to that point, we got some of that input, and so we've kind of taken that, combined it a little bit with what we had been planning to do, and come up with a proposal for what we're looking to do, looking to get some buy-in or comments about that. So we'll kind of start off as a reminder. In the McCallister Boulevard extension, this looks to extend McCallister Boulevard from where it currently ends just east of Covered Wagon, and that would extend it to Sycamore. It will also include signalization of the McCallister Boulevard and Gilbert Street As I had mentioned, it was about a year ago, we had talked a little bit about the design of the project, and really kind of what came out of that was a focus on safety. And some of the components that are listed here is really looking at having the design speed be on the lower end with a 25 mile-an-hour design speed, also looking at narrowing up the travel lanes. We had proposed 10-foot travel lanes. And then also looking at an on-street bicycle facility. In this case, we're looking at buffered bicycle lanes. There is mention of on-street bicycle facilities in the Bicycle Master Plan, so we're trying to incorporate that as well. So here's kind of where we ended up with our design. I will note that the text here matches the drawing there. I know that the drawing's kind of hard to see, so I tried to just pull out those numbers so it'd be a little easier to go through. So just kind of looking at that, again, looking at 25 mile-an-hour design speed, 100-foot right-of-way, which is consistent with the rest of the corridor, and so I think that's pretty standard for us. The 10-foot travel lanes, we had proposed a 5-foot bike lane with a 1-1/2-foot buffer. And that basically gives us a 17-foot half-width of pavement or 34-foot back-to-back pavement. We also had looked at a 10-foot sidewalk on one side and a 5-foot sidewalk on the other. That 10-foot sidewalk is another recommendation from the Bicycle Master Plan. And then that left us with about 22 feet on one side and 27 feet, kind of that area between the sidewalk and the back of curb. So as we mentioned, Opticos had come in and wanted to take a look at things, and we had asked them to do that as well. And so they kind of came in, looked at our design, and gave us some ideas for ways that we might improve that. And when they did that, they had looked at kind of dividing the corridor into three sections. That west section there, you can see, is what they call kind of their typical section, and that's an area that would look a lot like other streets in Iowa City, kind of your typical city street. They also have a middle section that's labeled as MMH here for Missing Middle Housing Section, similar to the typical section, but I think the biggest difference there is just the setbacks of the structures is a little less. So they pull those towards the street, but otherwise, the street design is very similar. And then finally, on the east end, they call it their Main Street section. That's the area where they're looking at introducing some commercial or mixed-use components, and so their street design changes some to reflect that. So here, I'm just going to kind of step through their three proposals. And kind of where this came from is, in looking at our design, they had other locations around the country that they've dealt with with a similar situation. One thing that we had told them is, given where we're at with the project, where we're currently going through easement and property acquisitions, is that 100-foot right-of-way is what we wanted to stay with. They said that was fine. They've done other projects like that, and so they work kind of within that constraint. And so here's kind of what they had come up for their typical section. They were looking at a 30 mile-an-hour design speed. My guess, I haven't verified this, is that's probably a 25 mile-an-hour posted speed, but would have to verify that, but that would be my guess. Again, the 100-foot right-of-way, they were looking at 10-1/2-foot travel lanes. And I guess one thing I would note, too, if you compare the drawing and what I have in the text, I've taken out the curb. So what they call an 11-foot travel lane is actually 10-1/2 feet of actual lane width and then a 6-inch curb. So that would be one discrepancy, but I just tried to keep it consistent, at least with the text that I had listed there. They look at doing a 6-foot bike lane, so not a buffered bike lane, but a 6-foot bike lane, and then 7-1/2 feet of a parking lane. That gives them a 25-foot half-width pavement. The section that they propose includes a median, so it would kind of be, each side of the median would be 25 feet of pavement. They include 6 feet of sidewalk on both sides and 9 foot, again, that area between the sidewalk and the back of curb, 9 foot consistent through this section. Their next section, the Missing Middle Housing Section, again, that's kind of the middle part of the corridor is what they were looking at. This is almost identical to the typical. Again, the really, the change is what they've called for the setbacks, and let me go back real quick. Would note that for the typical section, they call out that 20 to 30 feet as the setback area. So 20 to 30 feet for the typical section, and then for the missing middle, that gets reduced to 15 to 20. So again, they're kind of pulling that closer to the street.
[unintelligible]
Maz, is it here? Maz, you're coming in over the microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't put it in my ear.
Sure. Jason?
Yep. So one thing I would note with that setback distance, too, that is, would be sort of to the building face. They do call for allowing porches or other type of structures within that area. And then finally, what they call their Main Street section, again, this is the area that would have that mixed use, some commercial uses. I don't know, we know exactly what that's going to look like, but that's kind of what they're thinking as they work through that Form-Based Code. So for that section, they're looking at a 25 mile-an-hour design speed, again, the 100-foot right-of-way, 11-foot travel lanes, 6-foot bike lane. They call out 16 feet of parking in this example, and they're calling out back-end parking as an option. We've discussed that with them, and they feel that parallel parking is also an option that would work. So that's just what they had shown and what they had included in another project and what they had given to us in one of the displays. So that leaves us with a 33-1/2-foot half-width pavement, so again, 67-foot pavement, back of curb to back of curb. That 16-1/2-foot sidewalk is essentially from the back of curb to the building face in the example that they had given us. And so again, that would be no space between the curb and the sidewalk. So with that, we kind of took that recommendation, and we had a conference call with them to kind of talk through what we might end up with as far as the design for our project. Kind of where we landed is we'd be looking at doing it in two phases. Again, in this situation, the roadway design and hopefully construction is ahead of where they're going to be with the Form-Based Code and the zoning and all of that. And so we were looking for a way to incorporate a lot of this, but also be able to adjust it in the future to accommodate what they might want to include when development does occur. So what we ended up with is sort of our initial design or what we would propose to do, again, that right-of-way distance, the 100-foot would stay the same. We'd be looking at 10-1/2-foot travel lanes, so again, very similar to what we had proposed, a 6-foot bike lane, which is what they had proposed. That gives us a 17-1/2-foot half-width pavement, again, right in that range that we were at initially and that they also had proposed. We went to a 10-foot wide sidewalk and a 6-foot sidewalk. Again, they had proposed two 6-foot sidewalks, but we felt that with the Bicycle Master Plan and what we typically do with a wide sidewalk along arterials, that that was probably a better fit for us. That gives us, basically, when the street is first constructed, 11-1/2 foot on one side and 15-1/2 foot on the other side between the sidewalk and the back of curb. And what we'd be looking at is, in the future, that area could be used for adding parking when it's appropriate. The one big change, I think, from our design to what we're proposing now, is that we would include a median, that 20-foot median area there that would allow for not only the street trees on the outsides, but also plantings along the median as well. Another benefit is it would allow for the introduction of turn lanes if they were needed, depending on how that area ends up developing. And again, a 25 mile-an-hour design speed for what we proposed initially. Then sort of what we call our ultimate design, or what the street would look like eventually when development does occur, again, a lot of the same stuff. The biggest difference here is we'd be looking at adding a 7-1/2-foot parking lane. We would set it up so that the storm sewer that is installed with the project would be able to be reused, so there'd be some improvements there, but a lot of it is really just going to be kind of adding that parking lane onto the outside of the street. We would set up street trees to fit in kind of their final location so that, again, we're not having to remove improvements that we've made and really just kind of build off of it. One thing I would note with both the initial design and the ultimate design is that median section would really kind of be in the middle, so it would be more or less from kind of the Covered Wagon intersection to west of Sycamore, because we would have to transition out of that to basically enter the roundabout. And so we'd have to work through that, but I think that's something that we certainly can do. As far as impacts to what we have right now, we've talked to the consultant, and I think the biggest thing is, since we're able to leave the storm sewer more or less where it is now, and the right-of-way is not changing, the impacts wouldn't be nearly as significant. So I think it's something that we can make these changes, incorporate them without a whole lot of extra work. Unfortunately, it does have an impact on when we would be able to finalize things and get a bid, so we would be looking probably at 2020 construction. We may be able to start this fall, but we certainly probably would not get it done this So finally, what I have here is just a comparison, and there's a lot of numbers here. I think the biggest takeaway is just to kind of show that we're kind of talking about the same thing between Opticos and what we have in our design. I mean, we're right there. And I think with this comparison, the biggest change you'll see, you know, whether it's the parking, is again, if you're doing parallel parking, we're all kind of talking the same width. Travel lane, we're talking the same width. A lot of that stuff, really, I think the biggest change is probably the sidewalk, but again, that's us providing a little wider sidewalk than maybe they had proposed. But again, a lot of that's very similar. We don't see it as a major change, and so I think we're on the right track, and I think it's something that it'd be, I think we've done a pretty good job of incorporating what they've recommended, but also end up with a pretty good project. So with that, that is all I had.
So Jason, I know one of the concerns that Opticos had initially with regard to the original design was that it appeared as though there would not be, I don't know what you call them, curb cuts for north-south intersecting streets. But I think you've had conversations with Opticos about that. Could you describe what came out of that?
Yeah, and so I think we've talked to them, and I think there would probably be ongoing discussions as far as are there locations that we know that we're going to want intersections now? We certainly can accommodate those. There's nothing in the design that if there needed to be something changed in the future, we could do that. You know, the median's probably going to be the hardest part if there needed to be a change, but I think there's ways that we can accommodate that. And now that we're, you know, they're on board and we can have those conversations, I think it's easier to plan for that moving forward.
Jason, the median is beautiful. Do you have any idea what that does to the scope of the cost of the project to add that in?
It would go up. I don't know that it would be significant. You know, your pavement width is going to be relatively similar. You know, your pavement width is going to be relatively similar. Your construction methods, you know, again, you're not really in a confined space, you're kind of in an open area, so that should help to keep it on the lower end, but there would be some increased cost. I don't know what those numbers would be exactly at this point.
I guess when I look at this project, it's turned out to me to be something very different than what I anticipated when we were first talking about the extension of Macalester. And you even, in your presentation, Jason, used the word arterial. And I mean, when I look at Iowa City and I think about our street structure, and you look at north-south, we've got Scott Boulevard, we've got First Avenue, we've got Dodge and Governor, you've got Dubuque Street, and, you know, they're all various in terms of signalization and width and speed limit, et cetera, but you have really a number of different ways to get north-south, you know, at least on the east side of the river, and you've got Melrose on the west side, et cetera. When I look at the east-west, that's not anywhere as near as easy to do in Iowa City. And my interpretation or thought about what this was going to be when it was first presented was here, we're going to put in arterial on the south side, almost like a loop around the south side of the city to facilitate movement, you know, from the east to west, west to east, whatever. And what I'm seeing with Opticos coming in and looking at this is, and particularly if there's going to be numerous intersections with the north-south streets, we've got another, we have another residential street at 25 miles an hour with a bunch of curb cuts with the intersecting streets, and we're not any further ahead in terms of giving people an efficient way to get across town. When you go to the west and Macalester is, I think, 35 miles an hour with very few curb cuts west of Gilbert, and then you get further west and it's 45 miles an hour once you get west of Old 218 with virtually no curb cuts. And I thought from a year and a half or two years ago, when we talked about this, one of the things we were talking about is minimal curb cuts, maybe even using roundabouts. So for me, I'm not, I just don't support this at all. I don't feel like we're getting an arterial street. I think we're just getting another residential street that is going to end up having multiple stop signs on it and is, I don't believe, is what people in this community want or expect for that southern route. They want a way to get places with more convenience, and to me, this is going to be just another residential street, so.
Are there stop signs? I didn't hear you say there would be any stop signs.
With the amount of traffic on there, I'm just saying, I'm assuming there ultimately will be, because when you take that stretch and if you've got those north-south, you're going to have to do something ultimately.
Well, I think one difference, just to note, too, is from a typical residential street is you would, in this case, kind of have dedicated travel lanes, whereas a lot of times on residential streets, you kind of have a shared middle area. But certainly, it would have a different look than our other arterials.
Susan, I think you're right that the design that's being recommended here does differ from what you originally imagined, and I think that's exactly right and exactly how it should be, because we need to be figuring out how to design a viable new neighborhood down there that will be different from the standard suburban neighborhood in Iowa City. And the roadway design also needs to be different, because the idea of having all traffic directed toward arterials simply exacerbates problems rather than having multiple ways of getting around and moving around within a place. Arterials kind of force you to get on the arterial and just use it. So, but the bottom line is that I'm really thrilled that the staff has had a very thoughtful conversation with Opticos to make sure that the roadway design is compatible with the neighborhood design that Opticos is developing for us as we ask them to do. And likewise, I'm glad that Opticos has been engaged in dialogue with city staff to make sure that it fits with what the city staff believe is necessary down there. So, yeah, I think you're right, but it's what we ought to be doing.
I would just comment, I am fully supportive of this particular design. In my view, I think this represents the best of old and new. I think what we've seen historically in our community is that in our older neighborhoods, we have a very well-developed grid system, and that grid system did not facilitate traffic flow as well in terms of speed, but what it did is, is it created people-friendly locations. After World War II, there was a change in view on that, and the view was, let's see how much we can get traffic zooming throughout the community with arterials. And I think what we've seen with this latest iteration is to see a blend of those two concepts. As I understand this, this will be designed with modern standards, and it will allow adequate traffic flow, but it will not be at a sufficient speed that will impair development of a people-friendly place. And what I love about this is that I think that this brings elements of what we love about some of our older neighborhoods and extends those into newer parts of town, in particular, the Main Street concept. I absolutely love that. Done right, commercial is an asset, not a detriment. And I'm assuming that they will develop the commercial component to it in a very contextual, neighborhood-friendly way. I also am thrilled with the widening of the sidewalks. Those can function as adequate bicycling spaces as well. One thing I don't like, and it looks like the staff concurs, is this notion of the back-end rear parking. I know there's counterintuitive data that suggests that that's actually safer, but in this particular instance, I know that was tried in Cedar Rapids and I think met with nearly universal condemnation, where you were backing in at a 45-degree angle. It's my understanding, staff concurs, you're not supportive of that either, and instead of that 45 angle, you have the traditional parallel parking, which makes a lot of sense. So at least for my two cents, I think it's really fun to see council express what the policy preference is and then to come see that in the, within the professional engineering standards. So I'm 100% supportive of where you are at this particular point.
I think it's interesting that this follows this discussion of the police substation, because, you know, one of the things that I had wanted to say and didn't, in a way I'm glad I didn't, is that one of the kind of lingering issues with the South District is this concern and question about where can we generate gathering spaces, places where the neighborhood can engage with one another. And I think this, the design of Macalester, while, Susan, I think it does, it will accommodate through traffic. The question is, can it do more than simply accommodate through traffic? And I think that it will, and in doing so, will, one, prevent Macalester from becoming a barrier for pedestrian flow north and south. This often happens with our arterials. And it will provide a place where the neighborhood can gather together. And so to me, it transforms the concept of the arterial into a neighborhood's thoroughfare center in a very interesting way. I think the median is a better distribution of the green space than I think our original section, which had a lot of green space on the edges. And I was just also realizing that, you know, on the Forest View project, I had concerns about the heat island effect of all this pavement. Well, if we have three rows of trees running through on Macalester, there's a very good chance that we're going to have full canopy, depending on our tree selection, over that asphalt section. So I think it will create a very beautiful, useful in multiple ways, both in terms of traffic flow and creating that opportunity for the neighbors to encounter one another in kind of a retail setting, which, you know, I think is something really to look forward to.
I like the missing middle and the commercial possibilities of coming over there. The only question I have is, and the median, it looks awesome in concept. I know Iowa Avenue has a beautiful median, so there's, you know, great things about medians. The only question I have is, if in the future we're going to change it, and I understand it may not cost a lot, but if we're going to change it, I like to begin with the end in mind personally, where if you think that there's going to be a great chance that we might change the median, why not begin with the end in mind? That's why I back up my car oftentimes, because I know that I need to leave straight out. So I think that would be my only comment, is that the median, if we're going to potentially not need it in the future, maybe give that some more thought if we, I know the neighborhood is going to develop. I mean, it is a great place for a lot of houses to really be built, and so that would be my comment there.
And I think that's the intent. It's just whether or not we'll be to a point where we know where everything's going to occur. So I think as much as possible, we would set that up to not have to redo it in the future and provide those at the initial construction.
And I think it's also another thing that if you want to take it away in the future, if you have these, you know, the median in the middle and it's all beautiful, we know that the voices of the community would come out and say, don't take away my green space and my trees. And so I think if, for future counselors, if you can think about that as well.
Sure.
I'm excited to see this area develop, and I think I heard the word compatible, the roadway design being compatible with the development occurring in the area. And I think that's important. I mean, we've been talking about the missing middle concept for a long time, and that included with the Main Street concept. And I think we don't want it to be a speedway, so I think the speed limits are adequate and appropriate, and we don't want to see it turn into a speedway.
I think it's really important to understand that, Maz, you wanted to say something, please? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I don't have more than what you guys said. I really agree with most of my fellow council members. I really support this project, and I am very excited and happy about the design that the staff provides. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Maz. So what I was on the verge of saying is that I think it's really crucial to understand that what we have asked Opticos to do is design a new neighborhood that differs from the standard kind of neighborhoods that have been built in Iowa City over the past 40 or 50 years. So a key part of that is this Main Street segment. And I don't know the details, but I think they're imagining that there will be storefronts and two- or three-story buildings lining the parts, both sides of the street, at that Main Street part. And if you have an arterial flying through there with cars going, you know, 30 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour, that will undermine the viability and the attractiveness and appeal of that part of this new neighborhood that's being developed. And there's going to be other kinds of housing that will be this missing middle kind of housing. There'll be a mix of single-family detached, some duplexes, probably some fourplexes that look kind of like single-family houses, and some apartment buildings, probably. I don't know the details about that, so I haven't seen their designs yet, none of us have. But it's really important to understand that that's what we have asked Opticos to produce for us, and they're doing it. And it's really crucial to make sure that roadway design is compatible with what we've asked them to design for us.
Yeah, I didn't mention the land use aspects, because we're really focusing on the roadway design, but they are integral to one another. And I think it's also the first time we've seen that kind of urban design aspect to it, where you're going through, you know, what I sometimes think of as an intensity gradient, you know, as you head toward the center, the uses intensify, and the use of the thoroughfare changes as you go through those different building types. So it's, I think it's a very interesting introduction in terms of how we're imagining our thoroughfares, our streets, and our land uses to better integrate.
Okay, folks, any other comments? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that means we can move on to clarification of agenda items. Who needs clarity? That's not a question. Who wants some clarification? Go ahead, Maz.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question about item 5D budgeted positions having to do with neighborhood services. So Tracy, maybe you can help with this. I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it and hear what you have to say. So what effect would the proposed conversion of one position to another have on our ability to enforce the new exterior maintenance requirements relating to rental conversions in core neighborhoods?
It would impact it. When we looked at the job description between the code enforcement position and our building inspector or housing inspector position, they're essentially the same, it's just what we assigned that person to do. So we did want a person that was, that had the capability of writing specs and doing rehab projects, but there still remains that enforcement. So half, since the position is half-paid with housing inspection and half-paid with CDBG home funds or federal funds, that person will get hired and will still have to enforce our nuisance complaints.
Okay, good. Anybody else need clarification on any agenda item? I'm hearing the clock tick, so let's, maybe we could move on a little bit. Let's see here, see if I have anything. Well, I think I want to mention item 14, which refers to the moratorium on rental permits, but we got a memo from Jeff asking that we confirm our goals for future actions. Yeah, so the staff proposes three goals. I want to tell you that when I read them, I thought they were incomplete. I think my sense is that there needs to be some clarification or elaboration on each of those, and I shared an email with Eleanor and Jeff and copies to Simon and Sue Dulek and Ashley about this. So I could run through what I had in mind so that you all understand, and then we'll see what the council as a whole wants to do. So with regard to the staff's, the first goal recommended by the staff, it begins, ensure older homes and duplexes provide healthy and safe living environments for all occupants. Actually, that's the whole thing. But older homes doesn't quite get it for me. I mean, a lot of things are older homes, so I think that means older, single-family detached structures. So I'm just trying to be more clear, at least in my own mind, about what that's referring to. So what I'm suggesting is that it be transformed to ensure older, single-family detached structures and duplexes provide healthy and safe living environments for all occupants. Is there any legal difficulty with that?
No, I don't think that changes the meaning.
I'm not sure why "older" is in there in the sense that the single-family and duplexes in these neighborhoods are of variable age.
Uh huh.
And not all are old.
Okay, so maybe we need to delete the word, the adjective "older" too.
It seems to me it's, they vary in age.
I would agree.
Okay, is there majority support for the language I recommended with John's correction or modification?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Good, thank you, Maz. The second one, I'll just read the way it's currently stated. Maintain neighborhood characteristics and housing options suitable for attracting a diverse demographic in our older, single-family neighborhoods. I think the noun "demographic" really does not capture what we're talking about, so I would recommend changing it to read as follows. Maintain neighborhood characteristics and housing options suitable for attracting a healthy and sustainable balance of owner occupants, long-term renters, and short-term renters in our older, single-family neighborhoods.
Will you read that one more time?
Sure. Maintain, excuse me, maintain neighborhood characteristics and housing options suitable for attracting a healthy and sustainable for attracting a healthy and sustainable balance of owner occupants, long-term renters, and short-term renters in our older, single-family neighborhoods. So I'm suggesting deleting the words diverse demographic and substituting the words healthy and sustainable balance of owner occupants, long-term renters, and short-term renters.
I don't know that long-term or short-term, I don't know how we can determine that or how that can be a part of our goal. Renters, yes, but to specify a long or a short term.
Yeah, what do the rest of you think?
It's an important distinction, in my view, and I'm not sure what, you know, how that will play out in terms of our, how we develop policy, but it is a, it is a critical factor in terms of how the stability of the neighborhood is affected. You know, the, it's the short-term aspects of, which is, makes up a large percentage of the number of rental. In fact, I, you know, I think we've talked about wishing we had better, more defined data, but the information that I've seen in Census, 2010 Census, is it's the majority of residents in these core neighborhoods are short-term renters.
We can't require a landlord, require a two- or three-year lease, can we?
No.
So I'm not sure how we can do it. So I mean, I'm just saying. Go right ahead.
Sorry, yeah, just to tag on to you, I guess I would also like to know stricter definitions between long and short-term renters. So I know a lot of students tend to move every year or maybe they stay for only two years, but even though they move every year, it's possible they might stay in the same neighborhood during each of those moves. So I think, yeah, I would agree with Councilor Teague that saying long versus short-term without any further explanation is a bit too broad.
I think therein lies the value of using the term diverse demographic. This discussion, I think, illustrates that because you get away from this kind of detail that requires definition to be understandable.
Well, and even the word healthy is so vague, you know, how one person might define what is, what is healthy and a healthy balance, healthy and sustainable balance versus what somebody else would. But I like your ideas, Jim, but I think, again, particularly when you're talking about, yeah, something that you're not trying to define everything that we can't and maybe some things you try, be trying to define that you would end up in legal issues. I think the diverse demographic is maybe very plain, but I think it really gets at what it is, you know, without that more detail.
It's also very vague. Diverse demographic, diverse in what sense?
I mean, I think you.
I think you, I think when you're goal-setting, and I think that, I mean, it's a term that we use often when we're talking about our neighborhoods, that we want diversity in terms of, in terms of all sorts of things. Includes renter, owner occupied, affordable, you know, less affordable. I mean, I think it, I think there's a lot of things that can be included in that. But if you want to focus on the balance of renters and owner occupied, I think that really narrows the conversation. Maybe that's what you want to do, I don't know.
I think a lot of times when you're talking short-term renters, you think of the students, but as I was sitting here thinking, I know the university has a number of professors that come in maybe for one or two years and they are short-term, too, so it's not necessarily just, just students that are the short-term. I'd like maybe, I agree with you, Susan, maybe healthy shouldn't be in there, but the sustainable balance, a balance between those, the short-term and long-term.
I think it also kind of plays into the hands of the legislature, which is, I mean, the language that you suggested in terms of this, that we're all, we're still talking about how many owner occupied and how many renters do we have. And I don't think that's necessarily the conversation that we want to. I think it's an aspect of it, but I.
I'm comfortable sticking with the diverse demographic. I think it, I think it is broader and allows us to actually think about a lot more, a lot, think about it more broadly in terms of how we do things, whether you're talking, you know, a mixture in terms of the age of people who might be attracted to the neighborhood.
I think that's another very good example.
You know, the age of people, the socioeconomic, racial, student, non-student, you know, owner occupied, not. I just think we can think about it much more broadly with just those two words of diverse demographic in terms of doing it. So I'm comfortable with the language that.
What do the rest of you think?
Actually, I would agree with Susan and Bruce in this context. I, I think what we're all shooting for is a sustainable blend of all different housing types and ownership structures and, you know, residents in all of our neighborhoods. And this just gives us the flexibility to achieve what our goals are. And while I certainly don't want to consider the legislature in every decision that we make, and unfortunately, we are in a situation now, virtually every decision we make seems to be reviewed by the legislature, I think if we can avoid unnecessary review by this, what seemingly is a super city council, I think that would be a good thing. So this gives us the flexibility, and I think that our staff does have a fingertip feel of what we're trying to accomplish. I would say one thing in connection with the long-term renters, I think, for example, Housing Fellowship, in my contact with Mary Ann Dennis, is that one of their core attributes is long-term rentals, and those are affordable options. So I think there's a variety of different ways that I think we can emphasize that as opposed to this unnecessary dichotomy between renting and homeownership. I think we know, I think staff knows what we're trying to achieve, and this gives them the flexibility to achieve that.
Well, how about the rest of you?
You know, I can understand why you were considering other options. It seemed a little bureaucratic, for lack of a better word, you know, just didn't seem to, you know, diverse demographic. But on the other hand, it's the most open-ended, so it does allow ways, different ways of interpreting it and understanding it, which are consistent, I think, with what we're trying to achieve. So I'm okay with leaving it.
Might I suggest a different word other than diverse, inclusive demographic? I don't know. Inclusivity is, is more of everything, but I can live with diverse.
I think it's pretty much six of one, half dozen of another, isn't it?
Well, it's clear there's a majority sending my proposal down, crashing to the ground, which is fine with me.
You won your first one, though, Joe.
No.
You'd be too discouraged.
You don't have to, but did you want to say anything?
Well, the more they're, the more everyone's talking, I mean, I thought just the sustainable part, I liked, I liked that term, sustainable balance. But as they're talking, I think that demographic does get at what we really want to look at and try to avoid anything, as Rockland said, any scrutiny by the state for anything.
Okay, so we'll stick with diverse demographic. The third item on the staff's recommended set of goals is, "Prevent the overburdening of city infrastructure and operational resources." I don't have anything to recommend about that, but I wonder if any of you have anything you want to say.
I do have a comment. I think that this is going to be something that staff always looks at, whatever is created. I think to have it written here, for me personally, just isn't, I don't think it's the best thing to do, is as if we're trying to decrease the work that we do for renters or as far as like hiring staff. Is how I read this, operational infrastructure, the rental permits, I mean, that's where my mind goes when I look at this. I think we don't need number three. That's just going to be something that we always consider with whatever we create, to have it spelled out, just kind of give me the impression that our landlords or whatever are, you know, could potentially be a burden, and so we need to make sure that we cite that and look at it. So I would recommend that number three not be included, although it's going to be a part of everything that we do whenever we're doing anything.
I wonder if I could ask the staff to elaborate a little bit about what it had in mind with regard to preventing the overburdening of city infrastructure and operational resources?
I can explain just a bit. Part of the city infrastructure that we're concerned about protecting is the fact that a lot of our utilities in those neighborhoods are capable of, you know, servicing the single-family neighborhoods they were built for, but not necessarily an overburdening of our sewer system, of other water usage. Those kinds of things are also included in this kind of statement. So, so yes, it speaks to our organizational resources, the time and the staff that it takes to manage those things, but also other, you know, other infrastructure that we need to be concerned about maintaining within those neighborhoods and areas. So that, I think, is a part of what was intended there.
I think another example would be the availability of parking, the size of the width of our streets, the size of our pedestrian ways, all those things that have been built for one community and are being overwhelmed. It was also a real focus of when we were doing the earlier stuff about the number of police calls and those kinds of things and ways that we might reduce those.
So then I might thank you for that clarification. I don't know if you wanted to expound anymore. So I might suggest leaving the overburden of city infrastructure, but actually with some examples there, just two or three. But the operational resources, I would recommend removing that.
Along that line, Bruce, I had a really good discussion with Stan Laverman a couple months ago in connection with another issue that we had raised with a duplex about a block away from here. And it was a really good history lesson on the history of the conversion of a lot of these single-family structures to renters, in particular after World War II with the GI Bill. We had a lot of GIs come back to the city of Iowa City, there was not enough space for them. So they all started converting these single-family houses that were not designed to carry six or seven detached apartments. And what Stan told me is, especially as it applies to those particular rentals, not the newer structures, there was a real enforcement challenge because a lot of these houses were not designed to be rentals originally, they were built to be single-family homes. So I do think that in terms of identifying what our goals are, I think that is a factor that at least we need to consider. And I think that we could say it in a more positive, productive way, instead of saying prevent overburdening, why don't we say to enhance optimization of services to all of our rental inspection, you know, something along those lines, or it could be framed in a more positive way, that we're optimizing our scarce resources to ensure that for renters, that we do have adequate resources to ensure that there are health and safety inspections. And another thing is my understanding, the people that aren't renting, that own their own home, there is no, there are no inspections for them, correct Eleanor? Homeowners do not have that. So it is an issue that does face with rentals. I would at least like to leave it in, although maybe frame it in a way that we're optimizing city resources and that that would be a goal.
I would just comment, from a procedural standpoint, this is not, this is not an ordinance, this is not even a resolution. Where we're reading this is in a staff memo. So to me, the wording is a little bit, the wording doesn't really matter from the standpoint as long as staff is on the same page. We and the staff are on the same page as to really what they're going to be doing. So getting into wordsmithing of these three goals that staff has had in the past, I kind of see as a waste of our time as long as we're on the same page because this, all they're doing is expressing to us what their goals were in the past. If we want them to have totally different goals, then yes, we need to express that. But to wordsmith the goals they have as long as they do express the same, I do want them to take a look at our city infrastructure in terms of water and sewer in these core areas and parking. I do want them to be thinking about how this relates to operational resources in terms of staffing and does it mean, do we, are they going to propose regulations that means we've got to hire five more staff? I want them to be thinking about those things. So from my perspective, if we basically agree with the substance of these, then I think we need to tell staff them that and move on.
I agree with Susan. I think that Ashley helped to clarify that, and obviously, staff had given it some thought, and they do have an understanding of what these increase in rental areas in these affects city services. So I agree with Susan that it's just an explanation of that.
Okay, so I guess we're not going to change item three.
I have one last question.
Sorry, Austin, go ahead.
4.1, I missed this the first time around, but in the specification for single-family detached homes, does that refer to those single-family homes that have been converted into apartments as well or just those that are occupied by, that are still like unconverted in like their single initial piece?
I think it means all the structures in the, in the core, those affected neighborhoods. Yeah. All right, so I was also going to suggest two additional goals, so I want to read them and see if there's agreement about them or not. So the fourth would be, "Support the school districts' investments in Mann, Lincoln, and Longfellow Elementary Schools by enabling families with children to live within walking distance of those schools."
Jim, can you repeat what you said?
Sure. And the gist of it is, "Support the school districts' investments." But anyhow, the longer version is, "Support the school districts' investments in Mann, Lincoln, and Longfellow Elementary Schools by enabling families with children to live within walking distance of those schools."
Is there an example of incentive that you would suggest that the city can do?
Well, the rental cap ordinance was an effort to, in part, support the school districts' investments. There's been ongoing dialogue with the school district about whether to renovate and make additions to Mann, Longfellow, and Lincoln. And in fact, they did it. Now, why did they do it? They did it because we had also committed ourselves to doing everything we can to ensure that there was a healthy balance of owner occupants and renters.
The university program would be an example of a type of program that you could do that would support that goal.
What I'm wondering, though, Eleanor, though, is that can we, in terms of our goal, distinguish between families with children and families without children?
Yeah, that's kind of the first thing that struck me when I, when I looked at it, too.
I would say that this one is a component of the first goal, to have a diverse demographic within each neighborhood, that one of those goals is to have student-aged children.
And I think that was part of the concern, at least that was proffered on the regulation of unrelated occupancy, that we were distinguishing between familial types. And I think that was at least the proffered concern of the legislature. So I would say that let's avoid that at this point, given the.
Then a condensed version of this, what I'm recommending, would be, "Support the school districts' investments in Mann, Lincoln, and Longfellow."
Again, I guess I don't know what that looks like, for an example.
I guess I, again, come back to the fact that, and I get what you're trying to say, Jim, and again, these are goals within a staff memo. You know, this is not a resolution, and I think the diverse demographics is certainly a part of that. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do is really call out that considerable effort and investment that the school district has done and that we totally supported and encouraged through our support of the bond referendum. But again, my concern is that we start going down a path that causes us more problems in the end.
Well, given especially that we seem to be getting a lot of letters lately, and a future person with letterhead could be reviewing what we're stating, so I would think that we would, staff knows what we're trying to accomplish, which is a diverse demographic. demographic.
It also doesn't apply to all, I'm just thinking, say, the Miller Orchard neighborhood. You know, it's, the area affected is more than just the east side, it's the west side as well. So in that regard, you know, I think, you know, it may not be useful or helpful to be to try, I understand, again, I completely understand what you're, what you're trying to get at, but I don't know, I mean, I think we all understand it, and probably that's all that's important.
And that staff does.
Yeah, we, meaning staff as well.
Any other discussion about that?
Well, I, we've been preaching the importance of neighborhood schools for a long time, and that that's what we'd like to see, and we'd encourage the school district to do that. But I do kind of agree with John, although I'm a Longfellow grandparent and do appreciate that neighborhood and that school and what they've done. I also live on the west side, and having lost Roosevelt, that is a concern. I don't think we need to single out and start doing east side versus west side kind of demographics, but.
Okay. I get it. Another idea shot down.
Keep trying, Jim.
Throw another arrow, Jim.
I only have one more arrow in my quill, or whatever you call it. Arrow in my quill. Anyhow, the fifth one would be, "Increase the probability that downtown Iowa City will retain a healthy mix of commercial venues appealing to both long-term and short-term residents." I can read it again if you want, so.
That assumes that there is a distinct difference in the, that assumes there's a distinct difference between long-term and short-term residents in how and where they want to spend their money. And so basically, to me, it's saying students versus non-students, and so I don't want to see that language in there.
Without the short and long term, do you object to that language support commercial liability of our downtown? What was the first part of the language?
Well, yeah, so I'll get rid of the long-term and short-term part. "Increase the probability that downtown Iowa City will retain a healthy mix of commercial venues." So what I'm, what I'm saying, I think should be, is obvious to everybody here probably, what's bought and sold in downtown largely depends on who goes downtown, and that largely depends on who lives near downtown.
Ooh, I don't know. I don't know. You have an awful lot of people who don't live near downtown, who go down there a lot and spend a lot of money.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't mean to exclude people who go down there, and there are a lot of visitors who go there, obviously. There are a lot of tourists, there are a lot of people who come for ballgames and other festivals and the like. Yeah, that's obviously true, but, but on the other hand, we've had long conversations about this kind of thing, Susan, over the past seven years, you know, so I know you know what I'm getting at.
Well, I mean, I'm totally supportive of, you know, that we want to make sure our downtown is a very viable downtown with a diverse mix of businesses, but again, I don't, I, I don't think having that be successful is, is or necessarily should be related to this particular issue.
I would agree.
I think to the extent it is, it's incorporated into the diverse demographic goal, because, I mean, I think that's what, and again, I think for the same reasons, we didn't want to limit it to long-term and short-term renting, and number two, we want to consider things like age and racial diversity and all those things. This one suffers from the same problems.
I would agree, we just don't want to encourage that there are certain people that we want or don't want. I'm not saying that's what you're implying, Jim. I think your interpretation is great, but that would just be my concern.
I would replace the, you know, long-term and short-term with generations, you know, we make sure that there's things for generations to do. But again, I think as Counselor Taylor talked about, we don't want it to be west side versus north side or anything like that. I don't think that we want to get into identifying downtown businesses where we hear all the time, you know, that we need to support other businesses, it's not just downtown. So I think, you know, that diverse demographic, you know, that kind of, you know, incorporates it, for me.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we would retain the three goals recommended by staff with one slight modification to the first one.
Okay.
Any other discussion about the three goals?
I wonder for the fifth proposal, I agree with Counselor Mim's initial statement that singling out long-term versus like shorter-term residents probably isn't like the best move, but I see where you're coming from insofar as there could probably be a bit more diversity in the business options downtown, other than bars and restaurants. I think there's something, I've heard, like it's very informally called the toilet paper index, where basically, can you walk to a store from your house and buy toilet paper? Can you do that affordably or not? So I guess like when I walk downtown, it's just a bunch of bars, restaurants, empty shops, stalls, and I wonder if it could be a goal to support maybe like broader diversity of businesses where people can conduct daily errands from walking distance, so students don't need to bring their cars as often. Because I think that's part of the reason that people do so, is that they want to go to Aldi or Walmart, places, you know, they could buy stationery or maintenance supplies or, you know, that kind of thing. So I wonder, instead of singling out the types of residents, if it would be possible to say the diversity of businesses or different functions that are available in downtown?
I'm not, I'm still not sure that relates to this topic. I mean, I think that's important, and I talk all the time about the fact that there's hardly any place in Iowa City now to buy sheets or socks or underwear. I mean, you know, but, and I totally agree with what you're saying, but I don't see it as directly related to what we're trying to do here related to the moratorium.
I would concur, and I also think strategic ambiguity would be a good thing in this process, as opposed to overly explicit instructions.
Yeah, because I think we're trying to direct staff on something very specific, you know, and doing that is a little too much expansion. There's other departments that can certainly, I mean, we have the, I think we have a consultant that is, you know, looking at our businesses throughout the city. So I would say let's go with the three that are, you know, with the one change and go from there.
I mean, I think both points that Jim has raised are good for us to hear.
Oh, absolutely.
I certainly think, when I think about this, it isn't simply about the diversity of the housing stock. It's also important to consider that it's, it does have an impact on the diversity and demographic of those who frequent the downtown. So, you know, if you have a more diverse, if, if the neighborhoods within walking distance of the downtown are more diverse, that should reflect on the diversity of the downtown. And the same with the schools, that, you know, we've invested tens of millions of dollars. We would rather, it's, it's good public policy to have as many, you know, that, that the children who attend those schools are within, you know, the whole goal was within walking distance of the, the school itself. So I think it's good to, to remind ourselves of that. I don't know that it needs to be in the staff memo.
I know Jim didn't want us talking too much on any individual topic tonight.
Yes.
But I do want to emphasize, too, that we all want to make sure that we treat our neighborhoods equally, right? I totally get that. But we also need to remember, too, that as we review in this particular context more the challenges of our inner core neighborhoods, that each neighborhood does have its own unique challenges. So I think as we continue to engage in these discussions, we also can't be afraid to identify the individual needs that each particular neighborhood has, and understand that maybe a focus in one area, one neighborhood may need a little bit more of something, and maybe another neighborhood doesn't need quite as much. So I think that's sort of something to think about, that we can, we can have individual tailored solutions, but that's enough talk for me.
Okay, folks, thanks for engaging in that discussion. I think staff has our guidance with regard to those schools. Okay, anything else on the agenda packet? I think the answer's no, so I'm going to move ahead to the information packets, the May 2nd information packet. We need to provide guidance to the staff about policy regarding vendor wages, which has to do with item IP-7 that was in the, also in the May 16th information packet. So is any staff member going to say anything about this, or should we just going to dive into a discussion?
No, you can, you are free to discuss and ask questions if, as needed.
I guess my, my biggest concern here is the risk it'd have for mom-and-pop businesses and, and their ability to grow. A part of what's being proposed, I guess, is, you know, Johnson County, of course, we're very progressive with the 10-10, which is great, and I support that. But when we're talking about vendors out of our community, you know, that will be able to, you know, bid on this, some of those individuals, their businesses are, you know, trying to get to the next level, and, you know, getting a contract from the city could help them get there, you know, from any city, not just our city. And if we're talking about, you know, maybe, you know, narrowing it only to Johnson County residents or businesses, then I think that our businesses that don't do 10-10, you know, some, another community could win that, you know, that bid. I agree with the efforts that, that this program would, you know, would provide, but there is a lot of vendors that we currently have. I'm not opposed to maybe doing a questionnaire, you know, adding a question to the already questionnaire that we have, and then maybe coming back and visiting this, maybe within a year or six months, you know, something like that. Let's, we can add the question, do they pay at least 10-10? And then maybe we come back and look at this from the data that, you know, people, I guess voluntarily answer, and then maybe go from there. I certainly don't want to hinder any mom-and-pop businesses that, you know, and the other thing is, most city contracts, they're bigger, well, potentially they could be bigger businesses where they have a lot of volume, and so the larger your volume, the higher you pay. 10-10 doesn't sound like, most people wouldn't do that. If you're, you know, have a bunch of T-shirts that you're selling, you, you're producing thousands, tens of thousands of T-shirts. So I'm not certain, now, food restaurants, something like that, that might be a little different, but, you know, the city, I would imagine that isn't a large part of what we do or what we are thinking about here in this vendor participation. So that's, that would be my proposal, is that we actually added on the questionnaire, do you, do you at least pay 10-10 per hour to your employees? And then we come back in about six months or a year, whatever the case may be, and then look at that and move from there.
So Bruce, the staff proposed five alternatives.
Yes, I know that.
And you're, you're suggesting that we do the second alternative, is that correct? That we just survey vendors?
Yes.
That's it, right? That's what you're?
For, yes, with, with the intent of coming back, of course, survey, intent of maybe giving it some defined time, six months, nine months, a year, and then making a decision after we have that data.
Okay.
Which is basically what that says. I mean, is do the survey and then use the information.
Yes.
Okay, what do the rest of you think?
I think it goes along with the first, oh, Maz here, go ahead. Go ahead, Maz.
Yeah, I really covered recommended option number three, investigate a reference policy that gives competitive advantage for vendors meeting the desired wage level. As I, to your point, Bruce, I think this is will encourage the, maybe, it is about the city value, and this is will encourage the, some businesses to, like, be involved and paying 10-10. And, and also, we are really talking about, not like, if, if the, if the business, not like big projects, of course, we're talking about just creating a list of those businesses and use them as much as you can. Say, for example, if you want to do something, like, say, if you want to buy a furniture, and there is no list, in your list, you know that if they're paying 10-10 or not, you can just go ahead, because you look at your list, there is nobody on that list, so you go and get furniture, the furniture from somewhere else without even knowing how much they pay, because you don't know how much they pay. But I think this is about the value of the business and our value, what we want to see happening. Aborting option number three.
Okay, thanks, Maz. So there's a suggestion, folks, to, to support option three instead of option two. Do the rest of you have opinions about how we should proceed?
I would agree with Bruce on option two. I think, I think we need to get some idea of what the vendors are paying. If there's a questionnaire that's already going out and that can be added to that, and then, you know, we look at that, and I think, because I think we have to be really cautious about, first, get the data, and then in implementing any policy, be really cautious about how that impacts local businesses and our local preference. And I think Bruce raises a really good point about, you may have some businesses that are just starting out, and you want to help them, you want to support them, but they might not quite be at that point of paying some of those wages. So I think starting with getting an idea of which of our vendors are actually doing it makes the most sense.
That kind of goes along with, I think there was a statement or a question made whether it could possibly shrink our vendor pool and, and make the cost of goods or services actually go up, where some, maybe, as Bruce had talked about, the, the newer companies starting up, perhaps their services are actually lower cost, so that would hinder us on that. And I, I admire the original intent of this proposal, but I think, as staff mentioned, it's hindered by a lot of factors, including that there is no really list of company wage information out there, and, and that we do deal, do business with a lot of out-of-state vendors, and perhaps even some of those out-of-state states have a better wage than, than Iowa. Of course, it doesn't take much to do better than 725, but we would be dealing with that, too, and, and looking at that. But I think, along with what Bruce said with number two, I think number one strongly goes along with that, because we should promote the advisory wage that the county has put out there, but I would use the word strongly encourage local business to, to comply with that minimum wage.
Well, I, I can see where there would be certainly as a starting point advantages in having the survey as sort of a starting point, regardless of preferences beyond that. I do like Maz here, like number three. I think the idea of, as we have in our strategic plan, of trying to promote the local economy, this seems to be consistent with that. And when you join it with the existing preference for local vendors, you know, it seems, first of all, that means it's past the scrutiny of the state, which always seems to be an issue with us, is, that, that's already seems to be okay. So if we build on that, and between promoting local businesses and promoting a higher wage for those businesses that are local, that would seem to me to be pointing all towards strengthening our local economy.
Yeah, and I think, I strongly support three, and I think here's why. I think you're coming from a very good place, Bruce, because you want to make sure that we're not having unintended consequences, and I totally understand that. But keep in mind where our starting point is on this, people that work full-time at 10-10 are under the poverty level, right? And I think if you're at 725, you are barely able to survive as a human being. And so what we're trying to do is create a living wage for everyone, and I think we can do that through our values, as Maz said, that we express in our purchasing decisions. That said, I don't mean to muddy the waters too much, we do have an equity toolkit in place. I assume that this would go through that process in terms of reviewing whether there's any unintended consequences. Would we go through that process, Simon?
We could certainly go through that process. So the finance department is one of the departments that has been through the toolkit training, and so we could include that.
Because I know we've all talked a lot about social entrepreneurship, Center for Worker Justice has done a lot with new emerging enterprises. I know we've all tried to make sure that there's new business opportunities for groups that still haven't participated as much as we would like to. So assuming it wasn't too much of a heavy lift, I do think that's consistent with what I know the Kingsley had spent a lot of time on in terms of trying to make sure that when we do these policies, there's no unintended consequences. So certainly, I think that would be a good idea, but I do think it's extremely important that we communicate our values in terms of having that living wage and the value of hard work and the value of increasing your own life station. hard work and the value of increasing your own life station through that work, which could be done through home, small business ownership too. So I totally understand that, and I think you're coming from a very good place as far as that goes. But I would like to see us do that. We're not talking about an increase to $15 an hour, and it's also important to emphasize that we're not talking about a ban that they could not qualify for a city contract. We're just expressing a preference that would be one-point score among many, and I would, we have the local preference, and hopefully, maybe, you know, if we have the equity toolkit, there may be a, a, another point consideration that would come out of that particular process. So I think we really need to put our money where our mouth is, literally, in adopt number three.
Well, right now, we're at three to three, and I haven't said anything, so does anybody else have anything they want to say before I express a view? Okay, not hearing anything. I'm going to support option three, but in the interim, I think we should promote the advisory minimum wage and encourage local businesses to comply voluntarily.
Can you say that last part again?
In the, in the interim, because, because staff's going to have to develop something to, to pursue the requirement for vendors to, pursuing the preference policy approach. So I'm just saying, assuming that's going to take a fair amount of time, I don't know how much, we could simply promote, in the interim, simply promote the advisory minimum wage and encourage local businesses to comply voluntarily.
I'll concur with that amendment.
So I do have a quick question. That, so the, the toolkit that we refer to, would, would that allow special exception on some level for, like, a, a smaller business that is trying to get their feet off the ground? Or, because the staff don't know that part, or how would they know that part?
I think they would review it, and we wouldn't necessarily have a preset exception. And then, as I understand, what our purpose of the toolkit was, is that if there's anything the city does that unintentionally results in disproportionate impact on things that we don't, we're not trying to do, but we're just blind to that, that we're systematically reviewing that. And so in terms of what we would do to redress things that come out of the equity toolkit, wouldn't we sort of just wait until that process occurs? I mean, isn't that what we would, how that would work, Jim? Or does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think if we went through that process and we did find that there was going to be some disparate impact that we weren't expecting with the policy, that we'd come back to you and say,
Yeah, for sure.
This is what we found, and, you know, this is a concern we have. Do you still want to move forward with this policy? Or can we incorporate something in the policy that addresses that concern?
And hopefully too.
Bruce, just to your point, I would like to tell you that there is many small businesses are signing up for 10-10 in our list at the Center for Worker Justice. Many of them here in the downtown area. I think the small businesses can do 10-10 too.
We probably should point out at this point that our local preference policy has not had any awards based on that yet. There are exceptions in there in the ability for the other vendor to match the price for the local vendor, but I don't want to have us be overly optimistic of how often this would be used, given we can't use it on publicly bid contracts and, and many other limitations.
And I also understand number three is just, is just a point or something, is counted, I don't, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other discussion about that point?
No.
Hearing none, we have probably five minutes or so, we could proceed with regard to the next information packet, which is the May 9th packet.
So you go for it.
We're just talking general, the general packet, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so, and we have five minutes to talk.
Right. So, you know, I did include the, an article on the, this question of climate change, and then subsequent to that, Rockney and Mazaher have the, the proposal as well. But I found, I found this article interesting in terms of, you know, there is obviously with, you know, the findings of the, what is the name of that organization, the?
I wish I could remember, yeah.
Anyway, that came out with a new finding, the, on climate change, the, I'm blocking on the name of it, but in any event, you know, the urgency that that generated. And, and so in looking at the, you know, what was stated in this article, it, it just struck me that, you know, clearly, the city needs to be very strategic in terms of its implementation of the Climate Action Plan, and I liked what I saw in that article in terms of being able to translate our action plan into a more, you know, more integral, make it more integral to our, our structure, our organizational structure, so that we can be confident that what we choose to do makes the most sense, both financially as well as achieving our climate action goals.
Okay, with regard to climate action, there is another information packet item that directly addresses our current plan and what should be done differently, if anything. We don't have time to discuss that right now, but I expect we will return to it right after the formal meeting is adjourned, or not immediately after, but during that period after the formal meeting is adjourned, so hold tight on that. Any other items in that information packet?
Are they still, we're going to come back for the rest of the work session agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I want to say something about IP number four, which is the links to the Minneapolis 2040 presentation slideshow. Yeah, it was really instructive to see those. I wish I'd been able to attend that particular event, but I couldn't. But one thing that comes to my mind has to do with, well, one of the slides advocated allowing multifamily housing as of right in all residential neighborhoods throughout a city, in, in their case, Minneapolis. And I, I think the viability of this in Iowa City, of that kind of action in Iowa City depends on what kind of multifamily housing would be permitted and where, and that is a crucial question for Iowa City. So it's not the kind of thing I would want to leap into willy-nilly, but I do believe that the missing middle housing concept is a crucial step toward providing greater variety of housing within residential neighborhoods without unduly undermining the existing character of residential neighborhoods. So I, you know, I don't, we don't have time to go into that in great detail, but I just wanted to get that point out.
We're up for a complete review of the zoning code, aren't we, in the next few years or not? I thought I'd said something weird.
At some point, the next several years, yeah, it's been mentioned.
Yeah, I don't, Danielle's like, no, I don't want to do that. It'd be another three years before the next cycle. Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, well, it's 22. I'm thinking we should take a break now, so we'll adjourn the work session till right after the formal meeting and pick up, basically.
Okay, guys, I'm back later.
Yeah, and look forward to hearing from you again shortly, Maz.
Sure, all right. Bye-bye.
We're going to pick up with the May 9th packet, which we had just gotten into. Sorry, I'm trying to find my, where my notes begin here. All right, yeah, so the, the May 9 packet, does anybody have anything they want to bring up on that, for that IP or that information packet? Okay, I'm hearing nothing, so shall we turn to May 16? So council, staff needs council direction on IP number eight, which is, has to do with reviewing private housing investment programs, which Tracy wrote a memo about. So you're still here, Tracy?
Yes, I am.
She says unfortunately.
It's not 11 o'clock, Tracy.
Do you want to?
I'm thankful for that.
Do you want to walk us through it? What do, how do you want to proceed?
I can give you a brief overview, and then if you have questions about it, because I know it was a, it was a long memo, it was about 17 pages, so I will condense.
Hey, 17 is nothing.
Well, council asked staff to review the strategic plan, and specifically thereafter two items. The first was to evaluate existing strategies and consider additional actions to address the need for reinvestment in the city's existing private housing stock. So that's what this memo's for. The second item that we were looking at was to modify the existing Affordable Housing Action Plan to include new strategies for affordable housing. That will be in a second part, so that is coming. We've not, we've not written it all out yet. So what I provided was a basic overview of all the programs that we have that rehabilitate basically or improve our current housing stock. So it's your CDBG home, your GRIP program, Healthy Homes, Historic Preservation, University, South District. So I outlined the basic programs for each of those, and then after outlining those, and I can answer any questions if you have any specific questions about any of those, I don't know how detailed or comprehensive you want me to be. All right, and then we recommended changes to those programs, and a lot of the changes that we recommend, either to get at the Climate Action Plan or to increase our marketing efforts to maybe special populations or, to people who might need accessibility improvements. So like for CDBG owner occupied housing rehab, you guys allocate 235,000 for us to improve the housing stock in Iowa City. And then we even had, we even go further that we have targeted neighborhoods, and if you're in those targeted neighborhoods, which looks at different factors such as age of housing, the percentage of households that are, that have lower incomes that live there, we provide half of the project cost as a grant. So if you're in one of those targeted rehabs, you get half of it off as a, as a grant. So what we're looking for the owner occupied housing rehab is to do the same program, and we are hiring a consultant right now to go through our city steps plan, and they're going to be looking at those targeted neighborhoods to see if we need to tweak those, but that's coming this summer. We're still going to keep the program, so if we tweak a couple neighborhoods, it's still the same program. But we're also going to increase our accessibility, just so that we can try to get seniors who want to age in place, that they know about our programs, because we've always been able to improve accessibility improvements like raised toilets, wider entries, ramps, stuff like that. So we'll make sure we, we make sure we advertise that demographic. We're also going to increase eligible activities to include tree planting, landscaping, and stormwater improvements that you can do under the federal programs. With home, we're going to see more changes. So right now, we do a set aside of 90,000 in our home set aside. That's for owner occupied housing rehab. We're going to open that up to, to rehab, sorry, rental rehab, for any landlord of a single family or duplex property in those targeted neighborhoods, and they would get the same benefit as a homeowner. So if you're in those areas and you're willing to do the compliance period, then we'd provide half off as a, as a grant. We still put a lien on the property to make sure they, they rent at the right levels to the right income, well, the right rent to the right income levels for a period of five, 10, 15 years, depending on the amount of loan or assistance we provide. So that's a large, and that's, that's trying to target people where they live. So if you're low to moderate income and you're living in these areas to provide more assistance, whether you're owner occupied or rental. GRIP program, we're not going to change that much, because GRIP is the program that we have that allows the flexibility. So if you barely exceed the income threshold, or you want to do a project that's not eligible, such as additions, you need to finish your basement because you have a growing family, you want to add a garage, things like that aren't eligible under federal programs. So we'll keep the GRIP program just to provide that flexibility. The university will continue on, will probably budget for one home a year. The South District Home Ownership Program, we're going to talk about that in your next agenda, but we're hoping to, if that program stays, if we're allowed to proceed, increase the geographic areas to our targeted neighborhoods, so that we're not just looking at the South District, we're targeting any targeted neighborhood that we identify. Healthy Homes, that one's just a funding shift. That we'll get 75, we want to allocate 75,000, but instead of applying through the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County with money that we provide to the Housing Trust, Trust Fund that we were going to, out of that Affordable Housing Fund and that set aside, we just reserve that for Healthy Homes. And if, if you remember right, Healthy Homes is that program where if you have a child with asthma, if you have a child with under 18 that has asthma, we provide up to 7,500 in rehabilitation that improves indoor air quality. And then at the same time, we partner with College of Nursing for them to come in and provide asthma education onsite. And then Historic Preservation, we just started that program, so it's probably too new for us to tweak yet. We'll get more, that's basically to, to improve historic properties, the exterior architectural features. So those are basically the changes, and those basically get at improving the housing stock that we have right now. And we just wanted your direction, because I think with the home, the owner occupied, increasing that to allow rentals, we have to put that in your annual action plan that'll come for you in June, or come before you in June. So if you're agreeable to these changes, we will, we will write those in or make a recommendation to you when we present that to you.
I like that change of actually making it available to landlords, like you're saying, trying to address people where they live, whether they own or whether they rent, but then with the restrictions on income of who's doing the renting. So basically, my, my assumption is in doing that, that landlords aren't all of a sudden going to be able to jack up rent based on improvements that they've been able to make in the property due to the money they got.
Yes, we'd probably put some restriction there, because in some areas, the rent that they're currently charging is, is below the fair market rent. So if that's the case, we look at it and basically say, you have to keep that same rent, maybe allow one or 2% increase each year during that compliance period, but you can't just get our improvements, have 0.5% grant, and then up the rent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm very pleased with the changes, you know, in terms of rental eligibility, the accessibility, trying to fold in the climate-related issues. And on, on that matter, one aspect of climate action that I've just become more aware of is, is this question of urban heat island effect. And in fact, you know, a number of my conditions that I developed for Forest View kind of related to that, that issue. But one, one expansion on my understanding of that has to do with the notion of cool roofs. I'm not sure if staff is familiar with that, but it's basically, you know, most of our roofing is in dark colors, and so it tends to absorb heat. And the cool roof concept is using more lighter colors that reflect the heat back into the atmosphere, and they have dramatic impacts in terms of the, the temperature difference, which also has the benefit of reducing the use of air conditioning, which is also a climate action concern, is the use of refrigerants. So you may have, you know, staff may have been aware of that as one possible.
We're getting more active in what we recommend to homeowners to educate them. With the inclusion of Brenda Nations, our sustainability coordinator, into our department now, we're using, we're utilizing her more to talk about what rehab, like energy efficiency appliances, landscaping, and I forgot to mention it, but we did start partnering with Green Iowa Maricor. So if you're an applicant to GRIP, CDBG home, owner occupied, or even our university program, you're going through their, their free home energy audit, and if they need weatherization, they include that. But they're also going to start advising us, like, okay, this house needs a tree, and if we need to put a tree that cools the house, cools the air conditioning unit, they're making more recommendations. So we've made it mandatory that if you're applying to us and you want to proceed with a rehab project, you have to go through that energy audit. It's free, it's just, it's, it's just scheduling with the homeowner.
I mean, what I, what I love is the idea that, okay, we, we can do something which will be beneficial to the residents and further our climate action goals, which, you know, as we know, the timeframe issues are becoming more concerning. So anyway, I didn't, I wasn't, didn't know, because I didn't see that listed as a potential feature, just wanted to mention it, it's much less expensive than green roofs, so it's, it seems like a really sensible approach.
I don't want to get into detailed discussion, but I just, I find that concept interesting with, we have almost equal lengths of winter and summer, and so I would think the dark roof would be great in the winter, yet the light roof would be great in the roof would be great in the winter, yet the light roof would be great in the summer. So, I won't go any further than that.
Yeah, there are nuances that I didn't want to get into.
Yeah, okay. We can talk later.
Sounds like an entrepreneurial opportunity to me.
Exactly.
Color-changing roof.
Colors throughout the year, right?
I hope Ruth could do that.
Okay, I think you're hearing support for what you're recommending. I'm really pleased to see the energy audit requirements. It's just perfect. All right. Okay, we can move ahead to probably the next item. Let's see.
IP 9, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to get there.
Yep.
Yeah, IP number 9, South District Home Investment Program update, and again, staff needs direction on this. Before you say anything, Tracy, I want to note that, at least I received through, from Simon, emails from two commissioners on the Housing and Community Development Commission urging us to refer this to the HCDC for further review. And we, after you say some things, we might consider doing that. Yeah.
Do you want me to go ahead with the update?
Yeah.
Okay. Back in fiscal year 19, we approved, or HCDC recommended a project. The city council approved it, subject to a equity review. We used a toolkit to review this program. We did the toolkit, we did the review, we came back, we spoke to council about it, and at that time, you had some provisions. So, basically, the South District program functions like the university program, but in a different neighborhood. You buy a duplex, or you buy a house, you renovate it, well, you buy a house that has a rental permit, you renovate it, and then you sell it as affordable homeownership. University, there was a goal of affordable homeownership, but it wasn't one of the main overriding goals of the program. There's always been concerns since we started university back in 2011 about affordability, so we were hoping with the South District program that we, we touch on affordability, we provide homeownerships to a much larger group of people with wider level of incomes. So, some of the priorities that council established was to try to avoid displacement with all of our programs. I just want to repeat that, we try to avoid displacement when we can. When you provide CDBG home funds for acquisition, sometimes displacement does happen. When our nonprofits go out to buy a house, there are sometimes their tenants, and we have to provide federal relocation. So, like the university program, if those, if tenants are displaced, there's no relocation benefits. Under the South District program, because of the presence of federal funds, any tenant would be, would have option for relocation. But, we pursued it as we, we mailed out letters to, I think, 23 property owners of duplexes in the Taylor and Davis Street. Five said they were interested, three wanted, well, were more interested, two just wanted information. Then, we worked with those three property owners and their tenants. We notified the tenants, we had discussions with them, and I outlined that in the memo. Two tenants were not interested either in buying their unit, or moving, or accepting relocation benefits. One tenant basically said, yes, she's moving that summer, so she was okay with her. But, then the other side of the duplex, they wouldn't respond. We finally sent a certified letter, and we got none of the response. So, due to the difficulty in trying to acquire a property for this program, we came up with three options for council to consider. And so, that's what we wanted to discuss with you tonight for one of those three options. So, the first one was to expand the properties we're looking at to anything listed for sale, so we would not go out and encourage owners to sell, but for properties that are already listed on the market, we would look at duplex properties anywhere in that broader neighborhood, and I put a map of that neighborhood in your, in the memo. So, for example, if we can buy a duplex property for 180,000, that's 90,000 per unit. We'd spend about 25,000 to 40,000 on rehabilitating that unit, and then you guys provide an additional 60,000 per unit, either in rehab or down payment assistance. So, then we could even provide 25 to 30 in down payment. So, somebody might be able to own a rehabilitated home for about 60,000, a mortgage of about 60,000. We would provide financial counseling, we'd provide home maintenance classes, we worked on finding partners at Habitat and Horizon to find those, to find those partners. But, while we would try to minimize displacement, it is possible that we would have to displace, so I don't want to misrepresent that. If the properties are listed for sales, those tenants might be displaced, because there's no guarantee that the next owner will renew their lease. If we bought it, we'd allow them to finish off their lease, and then we non-renew it and provide relocation benefits. So, that's how we would, if you're going to choose that method, that's how we'd recommend proceeding. The second option was to expand the program in that same broader neighborhood to single-family homes that we can buy for, I think, $165,000 or less. Same concept as a duplex, but the price point will be higher, because instead of like buying it for 90,000, we're buying it for 160,000. So, and you can't share costs, like when you replace a roof for a single-family home, you're not sharing that with two households. It's just, so the rehab costs are a little bit higher. And then, the third is just, if you don't want to proceed with the program, we will just reallocate the funds and find a different program. To be honest, if relocation isn't possible, then that would, that's the option I would encourage you to, because I don't know how we could proceed with a program, even the larger neighborhood, if we negate all possibilities of relocation, because we've just found it too difficult. So, but those are the options.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Tracy?
I guess I do have one quick, I mean, would you, would you see options 1 and 2 together as, as a possibility apart?
We could.
Okay, so just kind of depending upon what you found, maybe it would be a duplex, maybe it would be a single-family home?
Yeah, we only have enough money for, well, it's 100,000, so whether it's a single family, we're, we're planning to buy two duplexes, so we would just have to adjust the money if it's a single family.
Okay, okay. And how long do we have to be able to use the federal funds? What's the deadline for us in using that?
Home suspended the commitment deadline, so we're not rushed to spend the money. Once we identify a property, then the top, the clock starts ticking about how long we have to rehab it and move the project forward. We don't want to hold on to the money forever. We want timely expenditure. So, if it's not a project that could proceed, we'd look to see how we could reallocate the money.
And today, there is no one that, from the South, from those streets, that have actually said yes, except for the one that's moving away?
Yes.
Okay.
So, no purchase has been made?
Nope.
And no interest has been shared?
No, because we just stopped with the Taylor and Davis Street. After we sent, we, we did a survey, we went down Taylor Street and Davis Street, we picked out the 23 homes we'd most be interested, that was most likely to convert to homeownership, or it'd be desirable, you know, like how each would have their own entrance.
Sure.
Single-story. So, we notified 23 property owners. So, we went through that whole, we went through that process, and then, since we're having difficulty, we decided before we proceeded, we'd come back to council, get your direction. And I know, staff talked about, staff did talk about going back to HCDC, but if, if the council does not want to, if relocation is not a possibility, no matter what, I don't see what, what direction we could provide HCDC for different input. Out of the social equity toolkit, we did provide everything that was on there, you know, with the home maintenance, the financial education, the down payment assistance, the rehab. I don't know what else we could do. So, staff was talking about if, we take it back to HCDC, we would probably recommend, if HCDC wants to proceed with a different project, altogether different, we, we'd do that, and we'd present a different project, if that's the direction you wanted to go.
Maybe we'll come back to that in a second. Maz, did you want to say something?
No, actually, I don't have questions for her, but I want to say a lot on this. You want me to talk now, or you want, or this is time for question only?
Right, well, right now, just questions. Is there anybody else who wants to ask? Tracy, any questions? Okay, so I think council members need to kind of weigh in here. Maz, do you want to express a view?
Sure. I guess the purpose of South District Home Investment Program was to purchase the home, the two home in Taylor and Davis Streets, and also, we, we said, we will ask residents to be participated in this project. And the council is to be related that, if a tenant indicates they are not interested in purchasing or relocating from their unit, the city will not proceed with indicating the, with this property that they choose. And I think, because we want to avoid displacement, any current resident who live in those places. Now, the staff is proposing to modify the program requirement by allowing displacing residents not interested in purchasing their unit. This modification is outlined on big 2 and 3 of the staff memo. In option 1, and included by the implication in option 2, displacing residents has been specifically rejected by the council, and has been and continues to be opposed by community members. Involuntary displacement can cause substantial disruption of the family life, without regard to the number of years the family has been living in that area, or in the home. The council, I think, the council should either choose option 3 of the recommendation by the staff, discontinue the program, and reallocate funds, or send the program back to the HCDC for further review. And recommendation, modification of the program could include removing the element of purchasing occupied rental units, and making a home buyer assistance program available to any eligible home renting family on Taylor and Davis Street. That would empower residents to choose, you know, the opportunity for the price of him anywhere else in the city. But, I think the new, like, modification, I really don't support it. I either choose number 3 or not doing that.
Okay, thanks. Any other council members?
Welcome.
So, I, I guess I go back to, what was the original purpose for this? And the original purpose was to, from my understanding, was to have, in the South District, individuals that live in the South District to, essentially, that are renting, to become owners within the South District and remain in the district, to kind of, you know, show positive efforts towards, you know, property ownership and whatever else that might come with that. And so, the city, I feel, has given us options that are not, that are really reality options. It's not like, these are negative options. I think they're reality options. I, you know, I agree with Maz that number 3 is the option that the community, the individuals that, you know, submitted this initially to the council, is the only one that we probably should consider, because the community brought this and said, we would like, you know, the South District to have this home investment program, without displacing anyone, and the optimal option would be to find a duplex where people side by side want to remain there and become homeowners. So, I guess I'm going to, you know, go with Maz and say number 3 would be the only option, but number 1 and number 2 is, is a reality option that the city has presented, and not something that I feel is negative, is just these other, these other realities. People will get displaced if they're not, you know, if, if, if we can't find the locations where people want to remain. So, I see it as reality options. I don't see it as negative, and suggesting that, you know, displacement is what we want to do. It's just a reality option. So, I would, I guess HCDC has stated, you know, two individuals have said, bring it back to us. I think we take it back to them and see what they, what they want to offer. I, it's not a big rush to the finish line?
No, it's not. We're just struggling, how, how, how do we improve the housing stock in this neighborhood?
Sure.
So, we're struggling. We'll brainstorm. I mean, if you send it back to HCDC, we're brainstorming. My, my concern was just, for some of the landlords, how do we, we can't force them to enter a rental rehabilitation program. So, if I could convert this more to a rental rehab program, I just don't know if we're going to get any private landlords. I mean, we have difficulty trying to get our nonprofit landlords to, to comply with all the federal rules. Private landlords, even the, the thought of income certification, annual reporting, they just, they just, they're concerned and they walk away from it.
I go back to the purpose, and the purpose is to try to foster some homeownerships over there. And so, I say, let's take a little time, let's take it back, back to HCDC, and then, we get response from staff, people start putting their heads together. I don't think that we need to, you know, debate this in, in detail tonight on any level.
That's what I feel too, is I know that staff is operating good faith in terms of exploring all these options, and there's been a few bumps in the road. But, one of the things that is really great about the progress we've been able to make on affordable housing issues is we have so many talented, smart people in our nonprofit sector, community leaders. So, the, the challenges are daunting, but I'm very confident that if we give ourselves a little bit more time, I think we will come up with a solution. And if we don't, and it turns out to be so intractable, then maybe we do just figure out a way that we can reallocate the funds and accomplish similar goals. But, I think we can. I think we can, let's refer it one more time, get more feedback from the community, and hopefully find a solution that is going to work. So, I think that makes more sense to give us a little more time. So, I'm supporting option 3.
Tracy, we keep talking about taking it back to HCDC. Can you refresh my memory? I thought it came from NDS originally. I, I don't believe the idea came from HCDC, so I'm a little confused on that.
Got that.
The city applied just as a regular applicant through the, the regular funding round, so HCDC did review the project, just as they review all others, and make a funding recommendation to you to, to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts, folks?
Rockney, if you do support number 3, it wouldn't go back to HD's?
Well, I know, but you had added that recommendation, is my recollection.
Yeah, so, I would support HCDC right now.
Is there guidance on, do we want to keep that neighborhood? Do we want to expand neighborhoods? Do you want to just, is there any guidance to give HCDC?
Again, I think the program was, you know, targeted for the South District to have purchase homeowner, homeowner purchase.
You know, establish a balance between rental and owner occupied, just like university neighborhood stabilization, because we do get more nuisance complaints from, from that specific area.
Sure.
And basically, to reinvest in the housing stock. So, that was our goals.
Sure.
And I believe we came up with, or you came up with that neighborhood, because there are a number of duplexes in there, and majority of them are rentals. And I was extremely in favor of this program when you first talked about it, because I think even Councilwoman Lee has talked about the university program being too costly, and those homes are going more for 195, 210,000, which not a lot of the lower-income families can, can afford that. So, I think we don't want to lose sight of that, that fact. And I would be in favor of broadening throughout the neighborhood to find, to continue to find some homes, but not if it involves displacing anybody.
I think the original purpose was a good one, and we ought to stick with it, but we have clearly encountered roadblocks, if you will, reality, as Bruce puts it. And I don't have a solution to that. I don't think anybody does at the moment, but that, for me, is a good reason to ask ACDC and the staff to rethink it some and say, well, okay, what, what must we do, given the facts on the ground that we have encountered? And there may be no good solution. And if that's the case, okay, we'll reallocate the, the money. But, in the short run, I think we ought to refer it to HCDC and ask them to weigh in.
But, to be clear, that, well, what we're asking HCDC to weigh in on, are we married to that goal that it is for a homeownership program? We're not asking them just in terms of how to help the private building stock in that neighborhood, but it's for a transition from rental to, to homeownership?
I, I think transition to homeownership.
Okay.
But, if they conclude the reality is so hard, that this doesn't make any sense, then we should begin thinking about doing things differently.
And I just suggest that there's one more clarification that's needed. Is it, is it transition to homeownership in the South District, within the South District, to stabilize that neighborhood?
Yes, within the South District.
Now, the South District is a very big area.
Or, well, however you define that, but...
Those streets.
That neighborhood.
It's Taylor Davis.
I mean, I think, to be honest, it might be easier to find a single-family home where the, the runner, it's either vacant, or that you're only, you're only with one, you know, you're not looking at a property owner and two tenants, you're looking at one. It's just affordability, when the, the lower level affordability won't be there.
I do recall us saying that if you couldn't, you know, on Taylor and Davis, that you can spread out within, you know, a little block. I don't know if we ever identified that block.
Yeah, the, the broader neighborhood was in the memo, but it's basically from the highway, Broadway, to Sycamore, down, it's the older neighborhood. It doesn't extend to the newer homes. So, it is a larger neighborhood.
I would agree with Jim, or Mayor, Mayor Throgmorton, just to, you know, have them stick with the original, but I think some of those, you know, realities are just going to maybe be a part of the solution. a part of the solution.
The challenge here, and I think, you know, Bruce, you said, you know, the reality. And I, I think the challenge is how, what is the greater good in the long run? And if, you know, if you, if you have willing sellers and you have properties that would be good, really good candidates to become owner occupied, I guess before I continue, let me ask you this. Tracy, given that you didn't get any further than you did, I'm assuming there was no reaching out to people in that neighborhood about purchasing? So you don't really know who might, I mean, the people in the buildings weren't interested, or at least not two in the same unit?
Yeah, the two duplexes that we were down to.
Yeah.
None of them were interested in purchasing. The purpose of the program wasn't necessarily that only you could buy your own property. And that's great if they could, but it was to, you know, the properties that we sell don't hit the MLS listing, so we market it basically to the neighborhood. So we'd market to the larger South District.
So you didn't even bother to do that because you didn't, okay.
No, we didn't want to, well, let's just say we didn't want to market a program. We can't find any properties.
Right. So, I mean, I guess where I struggle with this is I certainly understand the concern about dislocating people who do not want to be dislocated. And that can be for, you know, a lot of reasons. Some very, very important, some they may be just as good after they've relocated. Just, I mean, you have to look at every circumstance, every individual case, I think, in terms of that. But I think the challenge is if, if we feel that it would really benefit in the long run, that it would really benefit a neighborhood like this to try and transition some of these properties to homeownership. I think Bruce has hit on the reality that you have to accept there may be some dislocation of people who do not choose to do so. It's not their choice. That you would tell them that their, you know, lease is not going to be renewed and here's financial assistance and certainly, hopefully, every effort would be made to, and could be a requirement potentially, to relocate them within that same neighborhood so you're not looking at changing schools and those kinds of things. So I think what we have to face the fact of is if we are 100% unwilling to do relocation where people don't agree, we are not going to make any progress or not any substantial progress on moving the needle of the rental versus a homeownership in terms of, and so then I think you have to look at what is the long-term greater good to the neighborhood and everybody living in that neighborhood? If you can't find another way besides this one to increase that homeownership, then we're not going to see any improvement. And I would argue in the long term, that's not in the best interest of the residents, of the overall residents of the neighborhood.
You bring up some super valid points. I think we're all coming at this discussion from a point of good faith, but I think in terms of improving the housing stock, I think it just, it could be too high, it's too high a price to pay if we have a situation where we have a family adamantly opposed, leaving their apartment, and all of a sudden then another family who maybe has a little bit more money is able to then move in. Like, that's what we don't want because that's gentrification, that's the dark side of gentrification, and that's what we want to avoid. What we want to try to do is lift the residents that are there. But I think you bring up some valid points, but I think it's just too high a price to pay if it leads to that, that worst case scenario.
Okay, we run the risk of having a really extended conversation about this because it's complicated and, you know, competing values are at stake.
Yep.
So I would encourage us to send it to HCDC and let them have this kind of conversation as our, you know, just delegate it to them and see what they are able to come up with or not. And if they can't generate anything that they think would be viable, then okay, then we are in a different situation. We've got to figure out.
At that point, we might discontinue and reallocate.
I certainly support that. I mean, it, what I was seeing was, at least for myself, was this idea that, you know, we initially explored the transition to owner occupancy as something of value to the neighborhood, but we're running into friction on that. Other values that seem to me would promote stability in the neighborhood would be encouraging reinvestment, improving the affordability of the rentals, you know. There are other ways I think we can help the neighborhood short of encouraging and trying to promote a transition to homeownership. But I agree that it's HCDC, let's see what they have to think about it.
Okay, let's just proceed that way.
So displacement of any form, even at HCDC, is, if anything involves somebody has to move, it's out?
For me, yeah.
If it's involuntary.
Involuntary.
Voluntary.
Yeah.
People.
If somebody's willing to move and accept relocation, that's, that's okay. Yeah, why wouldn't it be?
That would be involuntary, would it?
Well, okay, when you say displacement, if you non-renew a lease, but if you're non-renewing a lease and the person's okay with that, and I wouldn't turn it down, I'd take the relocation benefit because you get moving expenses, advisory services, and the cost difference for 42 months.
I think what I heard from the people that, from the individuals that presented this, no displacement at all. If the individual that was living there didn't want to purchase, then go to the next one.
Purchase that unit or just?
Purchase that unit or a different unit, you know, but, well, if you had a house or, let's say the person, you found a duplex, one was empty.
Let's go, the most likely scenario is a single family home. So you're saying that only if that tenant can move in there, that's the only situation you consider?
I kind of see it as a pilot program in a way where this is what they're wanting just from the start. So no displacement, that's what the community has requested.
I would look at it as no involuntary displacement. Why, why would you deny the person the opportunity if you come to them and say, this is what we are interested in doing? Would you be interested and willing to move? We'll give you relocation money, we'll give you this, various counseling on these different things. Why would you not let somebody take?
I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying totally. And it's a part of the reality of what could potentially happen. But I think as this was presented, was let's try to trial this. And I think it was the people, you know, it was the community or whomever brought it, I think do it the way that they asked.
HCDC is going to weigh in, so we'll have further opportunity, right?
Yeah, let's, we have other topics to discuss.
Sure.
Before the evening is over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Speaking of other topics.
Hello?
Hi. Yes, Maz.
I just want to tell you that I was passing all day and I didn't even eat or anything. I'm gonna go right now, if you don't mind.
Sure, food's good. Yeah.
I want to go and eat.
Okay.
Because I've been a long time. I don't think there is something important, but Rockney, please bring out about the work.
Yes, I will.
The committee got me when I do it.
Okay, enjoy dinner, Maz.
Good night, Maz.
Night.
Thank you so much. Good night. Bye-bye.
Okay, I want to mention IP number three in the same information packet. This is pending work session topics. With regard to the pending list, I think we need at some point to discuss the possibility of proposing a local option sales tax, partly in order to fund repaving existing streets. Becoming increasingly conscious of just how dreadful the condition of many of our streets is or are, whichever the verb is. And I think we need to do something about that. So I would see, ask whether there's interest in putting that on our pending work session list.
Sure, I would, where then?
Okay, I hear a majority in favor of having it on the list.
I just assume that comes with like in August, but I'm fine.
This would be a new revenue.
It'll be a major strategizing, politically strategizing effort.
And actually, that's in a sense already on our pending list, but I'm being a little more specific because the current pending list says, review alternative revenue sources. So I'm saying, let's really focus on this.
Okay.
Okay, do you folks have other topics or items?
One, I don't know if it's a work session topic, but I'll try to insert it here anyway. And it has to do with that recent bicycle death on Old 218. You know, that's, I believe, in terms of whose jurisdiction is it in, it's actually Johnson County, but it certainly affects Iowa City in that it's a section of roadway that many bicyclists use who live in Iowa City. And, and so my feeling was, I wanted to ask you if it would be appropriate, if you would support the idea of sending a letter to the supervisors encouraging the board to address the safety of Old 218. From what I understand, it's, you know, it's been something that has been raised as a concern for some time. And so I, you know, as a tragedy, perhaps the tragedy can lead to advancing safety along that stretch of highway. It's, you know, the fairgrounds is right there. So there's a major destination along that stretch. And, you know, that's where we have our major bicycle events. And yet it's not easy or safe to get to by bicycle. So it seemed to me perhaps, you know, Mayor, if you would be interested in, you always seem to be the recipient of these requests for writing a letter.
Sure, I'd be happy to delegate that to one of our staff.
Or maybe drive, no, I'm just kidding. I could take a stab at it, you know, but.
Yeah, why don't you do that? That'd be good. I mean, I would ask staff to draft such a letter, but you could try it if you want.
Okay, I'll give it a shot.
I would say, I've thought about riding my bike, riding my bike on Old Highway 218, going to the fairgrounds, and I thought, no, this is nuts. This is really a bad idea, don't do it. And I've ridden my bike in the grass, trying to avoid being on that road.
Well, it's a four-lane road with very low volumes that may lend itself to a road diet.
Okay, so you're going to draft one?
I'll draft something.
All right, good deal. I want to mention IP number four, which is a report that comes from a website called Route 50. And the article is titled, Roads Suffer When States Focus on Expansion Over Repair. And what I want to mention is it should be read in relationship to the next IP item, which is IP number five, concerning a public information meeting concerning a widening of Interstate 80 in the Iowa City area. I'm not exactly sure what the boundaries of this widening are because the sentence was incoherent to my reading, at least in terms of the press release about the widening. But I'm wondering whether you want the council to express a view about the proposed widening of I-80, much as we did last August with regard to future widening of I-380. And also, I want to know whether anybody on the council would like to attend, what's the date of the meeting, the June 5th public information meeting about that proposed widening and possibly share Iowa City's view during that meeting.
What time will it take place on June 5th?
Five o'clock, five, six thirty.
And where?
West Branch?
Yep.
West Branch?
Town Hall, West Branch. I think I'll be out of town, so.
I would love to attend that.
Love to look.
Be around.
Five to six thirty, West Branch, June 5th.
Yeah.
Well, I'm also wondering if part of, I mean, if part of their expansion, I think there's been a number of fatalities near that West Branch exit. And I think that may partially relate to some of this in terms of that expansion. I mean, it looks to me when you read, I understand your thought about that first sentence, their use of phrases, but basically what it is, is they're starting approximately 1.5 miles west of Herbert Hoover Highway. So they're starting right where it's, the three lanes end now, and basically continuing east to, east of the West Branch, Charles Avenue. So basically, they're going to extend the three lanes from where it is now to east of the West Branch Avenue, West Branch exit. I can't tell you off the top of my head how many fatalities there have been, but that is, my understanding is that is one of the most dangerous entrance-exit ramps on Interstate 80 in the state, I believe. There've been quite a few fatalities because they've even had articles about what is happening here. And part of it has to do, I think, with the elevation changes in the road and the speed of some of the trucks coming through there and people, the visibility. So I wouldn't be surprised if safety of that, as well as continuing that three lanes.
You may well be right, but here we are talking about speed again. So how come the road's not posted at 55 miles an hour? I cannot understand that. Seems like such an obvious thing to do.
Well, and I think that's where we can gather more information and express our views in general. And you're right, Susan, safety is a component of it, but it's essentially, it's still this overly one mode of transportation focus that we continue to have in this country, in this state. And I think that there is a lot of evidence that widening roads and adding additional lanes does not solve the problem because it only facilitates that. So we may be a candle in the wind. I'm not expecting necessarily us to change everyone's mind there, but I do think even when we're a candle on the wind in some issues that we have to at least express that and look at the empirical evidence. Because I've cited the empirical evidence on road diets. If I'm going to cite it there in support of my position, if there is contrary evidence that says that this is more safe, maybe we could reconsider because it's certainly not worth human lives. But I think it'd be good to at least weigh in on that topic.
Yeah, I'd rather have had them change the speed limit west of us instead of spending $400 million on a new interchange.
Yes, I concur.
Jim and I voted against that one.
Well, what's, what do the rest of you think? Do you want Iowa City to weigh in or at least have someone attend the meeting, learn what they are actually proposing? This is a better idea.
Yeah, I think that's.
Learn what they're actually proposing. Come back to us and tell us.
Sure.
And then we can judge afterwards.
Try and really get their rationale for it.
Yeah, okay. So we'll listen, okay.
All right, any other items, IP items on that information packet?
Well, the only thing I wanted to bring up for pending work session topics and IP six, I did attach, as many of you know, there was a recent resolution from various community members. I did attach that not to suggest that I agree with every claim that's made in that in terms of solutions. In part, I thought there was a little bit of an overly critical view of the role that staff has made in terms of the progress or lack thereof that we've made. I do want to make clear to the public that any failure on the part of progress that we made rests at this table and not with staff. I think staff has done a terrific job, and if there is any criticism, it should be directed our way in terms of progress or in terms of whether we have made adequate progress on climate change. I know we have a lot of work session topics on the agenda. I do think there are some that we could possibly clean up in terms of maybe removing them. I don't necessarily want to call the list now, but, you know, climate change is one of these issues that has evolved from sort of 25 years ago, a totally fringe issue, to now we're seeing climate carbon levels that we haven't had in 3 million years. Not to the level of where we were with the dinosaurs, but, you know, pretty close. And it is really urgent. And I think we all struggle with the question of, well, what authority do we have? We lack a lot of regulatory tools. That's true. But I think part of the problem that I see is that individuals and cities and states throughout the nation and throughout the world have always said that very thing, that well, we can't really do much in our little corner, it's someone else's problem. So I think I do agree with where they're coming from, that with the capacity that we do have, are we maximizing the authority, both in terms of rhetoric and policy and action that we do have? We can't decide that all tonight, but I would like us to continue that conversation. Our budget sort of input session is four months off into the future. I'm hopeful that we can have, I know that Maz left early, but she was very much in support of this as well. And I do think the residents, especially in light of the climate emergency that was declared in October of 2018, is very significant. And we don't want to be too alarmist, but we also don't want to put our head in the sands either. So I'm asking for, I know Maz isn't still here, but she did support putting on a work session. So do we have any support for further discussion on this issue so the staff and other communities can have an opportunity to weigh in on this issue?
I think it's something that's good to just kind of bring back up and discuss, I think, just kind of review for ourselves what the Climate Action Plan is, what, you know, who's, we've got some volunteers.
know, who's, we've got some volunteers working on some things now. Like you said, things are continually changing. People are continually, you know, pointing out more and more urgent issues. So without going further, yes, I would support putting it on the list.
I do too, but there are a few things I want to say as well. So the first is constructive criticism is a good thing. Related to that, being pushed to do better is a good thing. So I appreciate and eagerly accept criticism and being pushed. I think it's crucial that both of those occur, especially on a topic as important as climate change. So I agree that we need to look carefully at and support the idea of having a work session focused on where we are now and what we might want to do differently. But there are a few, I think, three key principles I want to bring up as we do that. The first has to do with the advocacy of declaring a climate emergency. I think we're going in a very bad direction fairly quickly. But if we declare a climate emergency, we need to be very clear about what an effective response to that, quote, "emergency" would be. Because, you know, an emergency is defined as a serious, unexpected, and often dangerous situation requiring immediate action. So what would that immediate action be? And then I think, actually, whether we need to do much more with regard to our own climate action would be a great topic for candidates to city council to debate. Are we doing enough? Do we need to do more? If so, what? You know, so there's that. And second, I think, just to state a basic idea, our actions need to be rooted in facts as well as values, and a lot of what we get is values without any real clear understanding of what the facts are. For example, we might want to tighten energy efficiency standards and require, say, solar technologies for new buildings, but unless I'm mistaken, the state won't let us. The state has preempted the ability to regulate energy efficiency. Maybe there are some gaps and holes that we could fill differently, but we've got to know the facts about that. And third, obvious thing, we've got to be very conscious that the state legislature could easily preempt our power to take specific climate actions, and we don't want that to happen. So just because we're getting pushed by people who are being very vigorous in their advocacy does not mean we should do exactly what they advocate.
Agreed. That's the purpose of the work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you have any timeframe in mind for when you'd like to schedule a work session? Is that just something that we'd work forward, you know, it can happen before the budget?
I think before the election, because I think it really should be a topic of discussion and debate, if you will, among council candidates.
Okay.
Do you think it would be possible to do it before the budget review input session or not?
Well, I don't know, when's that gonna occur?
That'd be in August, generally.
Well, we typically do it in August. It might go as late as early September, that first meeting, but, you know, we can put together a work session that includes an overview from staff as far as what has been going on, you know, maybe going back to the memo that we put in the packet a couple of weeks ago, it was so late that we didn't talk about it at all. So some of that, I know there's upcoming projects and programs that, you know, we can introduce and make you aware of that are coming up. It'll allow for council discussion of what else you want us to be doing. We could have an overview of what may be possible, you know, if there are limitations by the state that we're aware of that would hinder some, you know, frequently brought-up ideas that would be, we'd be prevented from doing, then we can let you know.
My preference would be, just speaking for myself, that it would be before that sort of budget input session that we would do. That would be my preference. Does anyone else weigh in on that?
Well, it does seem like it, that this topic has budget implications, so I would...
So that we can direct that and then they could...
It makes sense to do it that way. If you do it in the reverse order, if there's something that you're really sold on in the climate discussion and we've already had the preliminary budget discussion, that's more complicated. And there's no set timeframe on the preliminary budget discussion too, so that can easily kick a couple of weeks.
You know, one of the criticisms has been that we are counting carbon emission reductions achieved by Mid-American and by the University of Iowa. I think that criticism is completely unfounded and inappropriate, but if we set them aside, their emissions, and ask how much of the remaining emissions, what are we doing to bring those emissions down step by step, year by year, that would provide a lot of focus for us, I think, and it would be really helpful to do that kind of thing. Because it's so easy to get buried in a lengthy list of actions, small actions, without having any idea how much they're going to help us bring our carbon emissions down. And I don't want to get buried in a morass of detail. I want to know, of that remaining packet, a package of emissions, what do we need to focus on? How can we bring those emissions down? Where do we have discretion and flexibility? Where do we not? Where are our hands tied? Those are the kinds of things I want to know.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that information packet? All right, if not, then the last thing we have to do is the council updates on assigned boards and commissions, and I don't know if anybody wants to say anything or not.
I don't have anything.
I'll just mention quickly, we've had, for the Access Center, had like a four-hour meeting last week on branding, so they've brought in MELD. So they're doing, they spent four hours with us going through just what our vision is of the Access Center, services we provide, the vision, who we're going to be serving, how we see the Access Center working in the community. Afterwards, doing a survey of all the steering committee members. They'll be coming back to us in early June with another, I think, two-hour session. So they're looking, trying to come up with ideas for us of names, logo, branding, all that sort of stuff, so it was a really good session.
Good deal. Anybody else want to say anything? Hearing nothing, I think we're done. Thanks, everybody.